Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Jason Blair. Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item number two is the Consent Docket. Item A, receive and approve the meeting minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 3, 2019. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May 28, 2019. Item C, receive the minutes of the Parks Board meeting held May 7, 2019. Item D, approve and enter local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for Cleveland County for grading, drainage, and hard surfacing of certain streets within the city. Item E, approve the reappointment of Eddie Vickers and Sid Porter to the Parks Board for three-year terms. Item F, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018-2019 in the amount of $2,882,838.65.
Just a quick question. Brooks, did we put out for the opening of Parks Board, or did we just reappoint them?
I believe the Parks Board just wanted to reappoint.
That's what they normally do unless somebody steps down. Most are per.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Motion carries. Item three, consider renewal of the contract with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority. Does businesses embark to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for seniors for the period of July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020, and approve matching funds in the amount of $15,000.
Mayor and Council, this is a longstanding agreement we've had with Mbar for senior service transport, or senior citizen transportation for non-emergency services. Recommend approval.
This is a budget denied?
Yes.
My motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda item number four, consider approval of the revised sales tax rebate agreement with Blue Cell of Oklahoma LLC.
Mayor and Council, this is an agreement that was approved initially last December, and since then, Ulta has requested a couple of wording changes and a couple of paragraphs. Our attorney has looked at it, and really, it makes no operational difference or rebate amount difference at all to the city. It was just some language that regarding the Oklahoma Tax Commission, that Ulta felt like they needed in the agreement. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda item number five, consider renewal of the contract with Apollo Building Systems for construction management services beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020.
Mayor and Council, this is also a longstanding agreement that the city has had with Apollo Building Systems. They have been providing construction management services for us. The rate that they charge for their construction management services is a flat rate of 10% of all the total, overall total contract costs. Staff would recommend that we go ahead and approve the contract.
What types of projects do they?
Typically, they provide their construction management on vertical-type constructions like the fire stations, the police station, and vertical-type construction, building constructions.
Do you know how often we use them?
Basically, for, I don't know as far as, what I do know is that we've used them for almost all of our construction management for, as I said, the fire stations. We've built several in the last few years. And then also, the larger, again, vertical-type constructions like the police station, you know, we've used them for the last almost 20 years for all of that, yeah.
And just because it's the latest one, the fire station's on budget and?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Most are per. Second motion.
The motion in a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
I'm sorry, who made the first motion? Thank you. Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Item number six, consider authorizing staff to negotiate an agreement with Garver for engineering and design fees and scope of service on the Eastern Avenue reconstruction project from northeast 12th Street to southeast 19th, and that's RFP number 1900-15.
Mayor and Council, as part of the funding, the funding source for this project is the 2018 GEO bond. There's approximately $6.9 million for the design as well as the construction of Eastern Avenue from northeast 12th Street to southeast 19th Street. We sent out RFPs to about, approximately 45 engineering firms in April. We gave them 30 days. We received back 19 proposals from different firms interested in providing engineering services for the roadway improvements. We went ahead and we, a committee of Elizabeth from Community Development and Richard from Public Works and myself reviewed the proposals. We put together a scoring system based on what was asked for in the proposal. The proposals were limited to 25 pages. They were to address their understanding and approach of the projects, the scope of work, the project team, related experience, and demonstrated their capabilities in all of those areas, as well as a schedule, was it, if it meets the city's needs. We went through the scoring system, and each person reviewed the proposals individually. We just added the proposal sums together and divided by three, and the firm that had the highest score was Garver Engineering from Oklahoma City.
Are we aware of the use of them before?
We are using them for bridge inspection through ODOT, but I'm not aware that they've done any design.
They're a good firm.
Yeah, they're a very good transportation firm.
Make a motion. We approve.
The motion in a second. Will you please call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries.
Jerry, just real quick, when all this, when do you look to start this project? Once all of this stuff is done?
I anticipate it'll take, we'd probably be back in a month with a, with a contract, a detailed scope of services and a fee. And then from there, they'll start design immediately, once you approve the contract and the fee. So I would say, I would hope that we'd be able to start in approximately a month. The schedule to do the design, this is, this is a two-mile project that they're designing, and it's, it's not a typical widening project, say like 34th Street, where you're taking in widening the entire street. There are some areas that are in not-too-bad a shape on Eastern Avenue, and there are some areas that, of course, need total reconstruction, some need some rehab. And so, the biggest and most difficult task with this, I believe, is getting the scope of services tied down on what we want them to design in each of the areas. We also are looking at quality of life with a bicycle trail, walking trail, and to do some small streetscaping as funding may allow.
All right. That was kind of my question, too. As the design process is going along, we'd love to, I think, be a part of that, or at least have some reports and that sort of thing.
Sure. Oh, yeah, we will, we will provide reports as we, as we, it's broken up into a study and report phase, and we would expect that we would bring back after the study and report phase, because that's going to provide some very preliminary cost estimates and break out the different types of rehabilitation and the types of where we want to reconstruct and, you know, how we're going to address improving the efficiency of movement of traffic with left-turn bays and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Item number seven, consider an approval, consider approval of an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County, the City of Moore, and the City of Oklahoma City for project number PJ-CL-0058 regarding the resurfacing of South Sunny Lane Road from northeast 12th Street to half-mile south of southeast 19th Streets, and authorize payment of the city's share in the amount of $250,000.
Mayor and Council, what we're doing with this agreement, it's a three-way agreement with Oklahoma City, the City of Moore, and the county. The county will be doing all of the work and providing the improvements. They will be basically on Sunny Lane from northeast 12th Street to about a half a mile south of southeast 19th Street. They'll be doing shoulders, improvements, any striping improvements at the end of the project. They'll be doing a cold mill of about an inch to a, two, one to two inches that they'll mill off, the existing. Any base failure that they see, then they'll repair those base failures with 10 inches of asphalt. But once they get the base failures taken care of and they're cold-milled, then they'll go ahead and do a, an oil and chip over that to get a good seal over the existing subbase, if you will, and then they'll do about a two-inch overlay over that, and then finalize it with striping. It's estimated, and the estimates were provided by Oklahoma City, they estimated that the overall project for the two-and-a-half miles would be $500,000. Our share would be $250,000 for this particular project. We will be bringing back another item at the next council meeting that addresses the other half-mile from a half a mile south of 19th to 34th Street, because that's a different agreement, because Oklahoma City is not part of that half-mile section, and so we would, we put together an agreement between the city and the county, using the same information on the cost estimates, because that's a, they're going to do all three miles at one time. They anticipate that they'll start around August 1, weather permitting, and if weather stays better than it has been the last nine months, it should take about one month to complete the construction, one month to six weeks. We're using the transportation impact fees that we have accumulated.
Have we looked at the possibility of improving the intersection of both these 12th and Sunny Lane with traffic lights?
That's not part of this project, but, you know, something that we need to maybe look at.
Might be something to consider with a in-con, see if that intersection might qualify for some trouble funds to make those improvements. And Brooks, have you done anything on the possibility of acquiring right-of-way along 12th, northeast 12th and Bryant to Sunny Lane, and then Sunny Lane South? I know those are two-lane roads, but eventually, the time is going to come when we're going to make them four lanes. Have we, have you looked at that at all?
Those are, those are planned as future projects that will try and find the funding source to acquire the right-of-way and do that, but it's, it's, it will be addressed.
Is there any, I just, the concern that I have is, what has already happened on 12th Street, just to the east of Bryant, is that there are homes built along 12th Street, and the driveways face, and I would sure like to keep that from happening, if there's any way that we can.
Sure, no, we'll certainly try and address that as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
On this project, is there any way that we have maybe some flexibility in addressing the street in front of the elementary school, prior to school starting that third week of August? Maybe make that a priority, because I know traffic gets really backed up there just on a normal day. If we add a construction to it, I think that might become a bigger issue.
We can bring that to the county's attention and see if that's something that, yeah.
That would be congested in front of Timber Creek.
Yeah. So basically, you'd like to see it started at the south end?
If possible.
Yeah, that's a really congested area.
All the time.
That's what Ms. McKenzie is speaking about. That's near our homes, and so that could affect traffic heavily, and I imagine if it's, you know, the construction will definitely.
People parked everywhere, your point.
Well, and I try to be aware every time there's an elementary school. I know that we have drop-off problems and pickup problems, but then you add the construction to it, if it's an elementary school, and where there's probably an extra added congestion.
Well, we'll request that.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight, consider awarding bid number 1900-13 Little River Drainage, this is the one we're tabling?
We reject the bids.
We're going to, do you want me to go ahead and read it?
Yeah, better.
Okay. Bid number 1900-13 Little River Park Drainage Improvement Spending to Cook Spence and Iron Company in the amount of $205,835, as the lowest and most responsible bidder, and approve contract for staying.
Council, we received five responses for this bid on May 20. We further reviewed the warranties and found some problems with it, so staff is recommending that we reject all bids and rebid.
Motion to per. Second.
Motion in a second for the rejection?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion to reject.
Second.
Motion in a second to reject the bids. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda item number nine, consider awarding RFP number 1900-06, the Old Town, Old Town Green Depot Artist in Residence to Maria Chavaria?
Chavaria.
Chavaria, I forgot. And approve contract for the same.
Council, this is part of the Old Town Park Plan that you guys passed back in April, I believe, or no, last September, sorry. Ms. Chavaria is here, and she's brought some words for you guys to look at. Our request for qualifications was issued on March 14, and on the 19th of April, the city received six responses. After review of all the responses, the Old Town Park Committee selected two semifinalists to interview. We held interviews on May 30, and, excuse me, the committee scored those two semifinalists. Ms. Chavaria was chosen for the first Old Town Park Artist in Residence. She's, her primary media is photography and has over a decade of experience of fine arts. The first part of the, or the residency will be in two parts. The first, while the park is under construction, she'll be teaching classes at the station and will attend a few special events until the park opens. Once the park opens, and it's anticipated to be hopefully in the spring, depending on the weather, the residency will begin hopefully April 1 and will end March 31 of 2021. During the actual residency, she will attend the Arts and Crafts Marketplace events at Central Park and the whole Haunt Old Town, and any other events that she would like to attend. During the first phase of the residency, the artists will be paid, excuse me, by budget of funds for the station, what they normally would pay teachers of their classes and stuff. And for the, during her actual residency, when she is located in the depot, she'll be paid $550 a month, and this monthly stipend will be funded by the, excuse me, by the rent of the same amount collected from the future coffee juice shop that will reside on the other side of the depot. The city will receive 10% commissions of all work sold on city property, such as the depot and the station, and she will gift one piece of art to the city.
Make a motion to approve.
Can I, can I just say something about this? Mark and I both sat on the committee for this, and both works and my finalists were amazing, and we would have been fortunate to have either. I know the committee chose Maria, and we're super excited about her and what will come. So thank you for attending tonight, and thank you for being our first Artist in Residence.
It's new for the City of Moore, and I think it'll be a good thing. Looking forward to it.
Okay. With a motion and a vote, or a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Item number 10, consider authorizing payment of $34,960, $9,900.64 to the Oklahoma Municipal League.
Sorry.
My finance director's doing double duty time, so we're just trying to.
For FY 2020 membership fees with $17,458.32 to be paid in July 2019, and $17,450.32 to be paid in January 2020.
Mayor and Council, the, or Assistant Mayor and Council, the city has been a member of the Oklahoma Municipal League for 20 years, and they represent municipalities of the state capital and provide training and publications that benefit our municipality. We request your approval of this item.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. We will wait patiently. Please call for the vote.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. To the item number 11, Consent Docket, item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June 3, 2019. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May 28, 2019. And item number C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018-2019 in the amount of $807,154.71.
Motion to per. And I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Would you please call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Agenda item number 12, consider approval of a contract with Presort First Class for the printing, stuffing, and mailing of the city utility bills in the amount of 10.9 cents per piece.
Council, with the retirement of our part-time utility billing clerk, we have moved many of her duties that were related to generating utility bills, coordinating with Violia on meter readings, to our head cashier. However, we believe the printing, stuffing, and mailing of our utility bills could be best served with a third party. We have obtained three written quotes per the bid tabulation sheet in your council packet. The lowest bid is from Presort First Class at 10.9 cents per piece. We will, this will provide savings to the city of approximately $19,000 per year. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
By the time, probably because her, because her time and all that, correct?
Right, salary, benefits, yes.
Motion to per.
Second.
The motion in a second. Would you please call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. This time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. 13 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular risk management meeting held June 3, 2019. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May 28, 2019. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018 and 2019 in the amount of $169,284.14.
Motion to per. Second.
Motion in a second. Will you please call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Yes, it is. Item 14, will you call the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Here. Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Adam Webb.
Here. Item 15 is the Consent Docket. Item A, receive and approve minutes of the emergency Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held May 21, 2019. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held May 28, 2019.
Motion to per.
Second.
We call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes. We'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Number 16, new business. A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Does anyone like to speak? Item B, items from the city council trustees. I had a couple of questions, but I think Brooks is going to answer them, so I'm going to leave them. Then number C, items for the city trust manager.
Mayor and Council, still looking at the private recycling service. Had met with the gentleman that had the business there for a while, and then finally got, and got the information back from him that I had requested last week, so I will be, evaluate that this week. And also, going to meet with Republic Services about maybe adding another recycling location, so I will look at both of those things and send a report to council for council's consideration. And then also, on the big trash pickup, we've had several requests for the storm damage, and so the plan right now is to have our, have our staff work overtime on Fridays and then go pick up the big trash, especially for the storm damage that's been scheduled, and then we will continue to look at maybe some additional overtime to try and get caught up with the backlog.
Okay.
And then just, oh, and then one other thing, the dispatch software that council approved last fall, we are scheduled to go live on that this Thursday, so we're excited about that.
Item number 17, executive session, section 307, titled.
Vice Mayor and Council. If, before you read the item, if the council would make a motion, it's been brought to my attention that we do have a small typo in there, in that the agenda item is reading a 2018-2019 contract, and it should be 2019-2020 contract. So if somebody would make a motion to amend the executive session item to be approval of a 2019-2020 contract, vote on the amendment, and then the council can take a vote on the executive session.
I'll make, go ahead. No, go. I'll make a motion to reword, reword item A to consider approval of fiscal year 2019 to 2020 contract.
Second motion.
Motion in a second. We call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Item carries. Okay. Section 307, title 25, Oklahoma statutes, permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons, under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorneys that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of the fiscal year 2019 to 2020 contract between the City of Moore and the Paternal Order of Police Lodge 131, as authorized by 24, 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B-2.
Make a motion to convene an executive session. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. We are convening to executive session.
Yes.
Danielle Mackenzie?